Join us both with the flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You made your seat up. For the question called Rose, call you more.
Barnes, Hastings, Lynch, Pistol, Ward, Williams.
Here.
First item is approval of agenda. I'll entertain a motion second to the amended agenda and add the ordinance just headed before you in the deal.
So moved.
Second, second discussion. I ask for a vote of approval of the agenda, the amendment.
Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
Yeah.
Ward.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
We'll go at the very end of the last deal and I'll ask for a vote for approval of the agenda as amended.
We voted to approve amendment.
Amendment. Second. You do it once, but we'll do it.
Who did it first?
Discussion, ask for a vote on that.
Barnes, Hastings, Lynch, Pistol, Ward, Williams.
Yes.
You have before you approval of the minutes for June thirteenth and also the monthly financials. I entertain a motion second to approve those as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on those? I'll ask for a vote.
Hastings.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Pistol.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Brings us down to department head reports. First item we have is the airport commission. It's here for that. We had a meeting Monday at noon. Dan Clinton is gonna take a leave of absence. He's gonna have some work done on his heart. He sent Joey Wallace, who works for Grimes Engineering in his place, he filled in for him. Gave an overview of what we have going on. He was very good. He did a really good job. He's gonna be very easy to work with as long as he's needed. They passed a motion and second to entertain trying for another hanger project. Joey was saying the money's out there. It will be down here where the tee hangers are now. And they'll put a hanger there and also move the tee hangers, I think, a little further down. There's not money available for that. They just have to have it submitted. They did that. Also, gonna start work over here on the taxiway for the new hangers or the taxiway for these hangers over there by the highway. You can see some of the dirt was being moved. I talked to council members, also to airport commission. Talked about Steve Dunleavy getting some of those dirt. We've kinda watched that dirt. It's gonna have to be moved at some time for this taxiway. He's gonna get, didn't say how many loads, a few loads, and was willing to trade that out for cleaning up some of these ditches around here. We've been having trouble every time it rains. It floods the Baptist church. And I talked to Chad and he said, yeah, if it's not something astronomical, certainly not gonna be over five thousand dollars worth. But I think it'd be a good investment. Keep it some program out. Also, Bob Watson, our commissioner, is back. He's well. We'll have middle of this month. We'll know if Jimmy Kidd's gonna return or not. Joey Wallace found, I think, about another forty-five thousand dollars that we might can go for on some unused money. Dan didn't think we could use, but he thinks we can. Also, the police department, they okay for you guys to use the facility September twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth. And November sixth through the seventh, if that's okay with the council. Need a motion second, but if you're approval. I think you got some training going on.
Yes, we're having the Criminal Justice Institute's coming up, putting on a basic crime scene processing class in September. And then crime scene digital photography in November.
That's about all I have on the airport. Any? Brings us to animal control, Randy Tharp.
Okay, right now, we currently have nine dogs and twelve cats. Two cats were adopted and one dog. We had some cat cages donated from Fairfield Bay Shelter. They got new ones. And they brought me, or us, their others. And they're really nice. We got two sets. And they brought a ton of canned cat food and dry cat food to share with us. Because they had went and got it at some, they had some kind of a deal where you could take a trailer and truck and load all you wanted. Whatever, but it was like way off. But their code enforcement officer went and got it. So they shared that. I had five calls. Three of them I handled over the phone. Two of them officers, city officers called me and I responded. We had donations from Walmart, Methodist store. At this time, we have two community service workers down there, working off their fines. And yesterday, Merritt Energy came out with, I'm thinking there's gonna be like four guys, you know. I drive up and I had nowhere to park. That place was full of Merritt Energy trucks.
What's Merritt Energy doing?
They remade, did all of our outside kennels, fixed all of them back. And they did, they took, well, I had two fans, you know, go down. Well, they took those two, 'cause I bought two new ones, and they took those two and made one good one, so that I would have a spare. They fixed the water leak that I had in my bathtub where I would give the dogs bath. The hose had, anyway, they fixed it. Just numerous things. They hauled up my trash. I mean, just, they were amazing. And I wanna say thanks to Sam Lord, because he came out there and spoke with the guys and, you know, thanked them and all that, so that was all good. Sheriff came over yesterday and told me that if I ever needed anything or gotten a bind to hauler and he could send three oh nines over to help me if I need it. Other than that, has anybody had any questions?
I just had, you answer that, is it going out there okay? And I know that the energy crew, whatever, what's her name?
Merritt.
Merritt, yeah. Did a really good job.
Yeah.
Working on it. Charles got up some fencing out there and they.
Yes.
They were able to fix stuff. And they spent a lot of time. We appreciate that very much. Other thing that, I just had a call from someone in the county. There's, if anybody's looking to adopt a stray dog that we don't have out of the Culpeper area, call me.
I get probably fifty.
I heard those guys say if you needed anything, that they'd be willing to come back and if you do anything.
Yes. Tyler Bigelow told me to get ahold of him if I needed anything.
Yeah, that was, I really appreciate them for that. Anything else for Rita?
Softball?
Yes, thank you very much. Fire department chief Webb is out. He's taking a well-deserved break, I think. We made an architect selection. We'll talk about it under new business. Have a resolution for that. Also, I mentioned, he's traveling. And once he gets back, I think we'll get back on that fire department that we selected our architect. Start meeting on that and try to fast track that as quick as we can. But we had nine bidders and I'll discuss that under the resolution. And I think we made a wise choice on that. That's all I have on the fire. Brings us down to parks and recs and street department, Charles Wilson.
The grass is growing like wild. By the time I think we get it mowed, it's gonna be down at rates. That, but not gonna stay on top of that. Or I guess they started playing softball. Didn't even know, I guess they'd been playing for a while before anybody ever called and let me know they're playing. I was like, cool. So they've been taking care of it themselves. I'd like to pave the parking lot. Right there where the basketball court is and all that. And that'll help bring maybe the car show back in during Archie Fest. 'Cause a lot of them guys don't wanna park on the pavement. And they can have a different price for parking on the pavement for entry fee versus parking on the grass.
Do or don't?
You can.
No, I know.
They don't wanna park on the pavement.
A lot of these guys got some of these fancier cars. They don't wanna, that's a lot of reason why they kinda backed out of coming over. 'Cause they don't wanna be out in the grass.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't, and I understand that, so.
I thought you said park on pavement.
So if we can get them, well, it'd be a different price. I mean, they'll let the guys running the car show have a price for being on pavement. And then versus a price of somebody's just got his two thousand eighteen Dodge out there and he wants to show it off. Can park in the grass and don't mind it for a cheaper price. And that, there's a lot of that, so. Or they used to be whenever.
Yeah, or a tow ditch, or not a ditch, but a header, you know, or that.
Well, if we cut that down where the pavement comes in.
Yeah.
I think it'll help even with the wash.
Okay.
Once we cut that in and undermine it on that, then where the water can't get in and cut a lip, then it'll, it'll actually make a.
Yeah, we'll avoid.
It'll make it easier on cleaning up and everything after flood.
Then we'll be able to curb that around it.
Yep. Shouldn't have any trouble getting any kind of curb that won't put in. But then, actually, what we're gonna do is kinda level it and figure out exactly where we want it and then taper it into the dirt itself.
Right.
And then, usually that's not just, the only place it ever really blows out is right at the edge of that pavement where the street comes off. And the gravel's always higher than the street, but if we can get that tucked and cut in at it, so.
At the right angle, you'll be fine.
I mean, it's just something to think about. I mean, it would pull, instead of having two different events, it seems like that's what we have. We can actually get one event going at one time. And come right out of the car show right into the car wash.
Any idea how much it costs to pay that?
I had a bid on it at one time, but as far as went back up. I think I had a bid on it at one time for like fifty-six thousand, which wasn't bad, no. But I'll have to get a new bid with these new guys and have them. And then, if we come in, depending on what we do, we need to cut it where everything comes in level. I want, I want it to come in level with the basketball court and everything. So the sidewalks and the other end.
Leaves out, yeah. Yeah, it might carry it a lot better if it was.
And then, I've got some ditch stuff that we've done there. And I'd actually like to cut them in and actually concrete those in. Actually do some ditch paving and fix those where they quit filling in the silt. And then after the flood, when they do fill in, you can just go out there with fire wash and wash all the silt right now. I mean, right now, our water's kinda scattering. And I've not cut into it any this year because, well, actually, I figured the grass would pick rolling, but I wished I'd went ahead and cut it. But it makes a mess whenever you cut it, the ditch back in. There's a lot of, we got a lot of dead trees out there. So I've got somebody that's wanting to cut them all up. So this fall, he said he would contact me and me and my crew would drop them. And then he's gonna cut them up and haul them out for firewood, so. Anything, if he just hauls one tree off, it'll just be one tree. I don't have to haul off. He's welcome to every tree out there. I think there's about thirteen or fourteen that I've gotta get on the ground. And there's a beehive out there. It's not bothered anybody that I know of, but it may now that I mention it. We've been mowing weed around it for all year, so.
Is it hind beehive?
Yeah.
Can you move it?
No. It's in a green gum tree, so. And it's not a very big a tree, so I can't really be that big. Worshe's trying to do a trap out. I mean, if worse comes to worse, if we have a problem there, then we can just get rid of them. That's just something for y'all to think about. There is the beehive there.
I'm gonna be somebody to mow, to mow.
I've never done a trap out on a tree and really don't even care if I have these.
Right.
Don't love them, buy them and don't like them.
I'll get Shane McDonald Park. Shane McDonald's supposed to give me his final price on those awnings and calls of other people I haven't heard from. On the twentieth of this month, Mike Sprague will be over here with about the other hundred thousand dollar grant to piggyback that. And basically, it ends up seventy-eight or eighty-seven thousand dollars is what we get to use out of that with that onsite visit. We're applying for that. Mitzi said we may or may not get it. Didn't act like we might the first year. But, you know, you don't if you don't apply. I kinda thought we would get that for sure. But there's a lot of other little towns competing that never, never has that. But we'll go ahead and go, by the, by the next season, we will have, if people don't get hit on the head, don't have to get set in the sun and get rained on. That'll be pretty reasonable, I believe. Like I said, it'll come in around twenty or something. And also, Trey Foster called me back on that other sidewalk, Charles, from skate park up there. I kinda looked like we weren't gonna be able to afford that with the bridge. And he said, I'll be up next week. And said, we need to go ahead and just get that. He said, I can hang on to that for over a year.
Well, I'll have it, should have it. If he shows up at the right time. I've been bush hogging and cleaning it up, so we shouldn't have any trouble walking in and out figuring out exactly where.
Well, Mitzi talk like, if we, you know, if he does something like that, Mike could use him for that fun park grant we're applying for. To get a rough drawing of that at no cost to the city, which would be great. So we'll revisit that. The other thing, that's all I had on parks.
The street department, I've been pushing back streets. Been working on the worst one with all this rain and everything this time of year. I mean, we've hauled a lot of brush, which is understandable. I mean, people limbs, 'cause they're growing out in the streets as fast as I can cut them. So I know they're growing out in the yard. So we've been extra busy with brush this year. It seems like at least once or twice a week, we've had to halt brush, so. But that's understandable. Like I said, the streets have been growing pretty fast, pretty wild. So we've had to push a lot of them back. Working on town branch, trying to get that back up because we're fixing to start getting into the rainy season, so. Any of that that I can get cleaned up. And there's a couple Beaver Downs, so I gotta get cleaned up so I can get to the Beaver Downs and get them knocked out, so. Once I get all that, that's pretty much it.
Yeah, alleyway, the water department's cutting, putting new sewer line in the alley behind the Chamber of Commerce. Eventually, all the way back to right here in the, you can pass that around. Summit subcontractor for them is gonna run some gas lines. Got with Will, same time, they're replacing some sewer lines kinda behind the sweet shop and Angela Harges, or Alexanders. That'll include all the well there behind Jamie D. But we've been wanting to do that for a while. We digging in the ground, we finding all kinds of stuff. Phone company's coming out next week and go ahead and start running their lines down and get those. I think we get those lines off the quartz square pretty soon, once we get that done. And then we'll look at a way to drain it, which'll help everybody so when it rains. So we got, we got four, four institutions there working at the same time, which is good. Because anytime you dig in the ground, you get anything, y'all are finding all kinds of stuff, I'm sure. But the sewer would be a lot better, you know, have to. That, that's what I had on streets, I think. Yeah, Artelco, City Summit and subcontractors and the water company. That's what's going on in the alleyways, as anybody's asking. So anything on streets for Charles, anything else?
I got a question, just because Charles was the one that was having, was having to take care of it. The, where like last year when they took all the stuff down to the junk or whatever, where they used to bring it, leave it out, there's a road. Last year, they took it down to the, I think it was last year.
Junk be gone, down?
Yeah, junk be gone, whatever it is. Are we doing any, somebody wanted to know if we were doing anything like that.
The chamber said they, the chamber said they weren't doing it this year.
Right.
Yeah.
Chamber's usually responsible for that.
Chamber foot's the tipping fee. Yeah. It's like twenty-five, twenty-five hundred or so, I think.
Twenty-five hundred, I think last year maybe thirty-five.
Yeah, it's getting to four thousand.
I think it was, yeah.
Yeah, it was way up there last year because, I mean, it makes it easier on my crew. And usually, it's supposed to be a three-day deal, but it ends up being a three-week deal. Because we'll have honey hills one day and this area one day and this area one day. And, well, they'll see us come by and then that night, they're like, oh, man. It was junk be gone. Well, y'all didn't stop and get my stuff and then. But it worked better having them bring it to there? Yeah. And that way, there's no, well, no, we didn't forget you. You just didn't bring it by.
Right.
Still get to them restack them, but.
Yeah, well, you have to have somebody there. You have to have somebody there.
That's something to change on which it will.
Tires and all that stuff, 'cause you can't take the steel. Is it, I guess what I'm asking, is it something that we should look into doing as a city? Even if the Chamber of Commerce doesn't wanna pay for it, something we need to do anyway to try to help?
What we take it out of the streets?
I don't know. Probably, I don't know. Maybe recycling, but you'll have to add, you'll have to move some money into recycling. Or some, really no line item in streets for that. I mean, it's absolutely good stuff. So I really don't know how we could do that. Well, we had to think, we need to think about it anyway.
Yeah. We've kinda been, and it, and it's own, kinda set the bill on it anyway. 'Cause we give the chamber money.
We give the chamber money. That's why they're not doing it, is 'cause we took all the, we didn't, we ain't giving them our money this year.
They weren't gonna do it last year either.
But they did.
Richard told them to, or talked to them.
Now this year, they've said they're not doing it.
No.
Because we're not giving them any money. If we're paying, I mean, basically, we're paying for it anyway.
Right.
It provides a service that is helpful. How much, if we do it, we need to do it in and around. Into September first of October. September first of October, yeah, because I've got quite a few little things coming in. I mean, we got the chuck wagon feet and all that stuff, and I've gotta get the table. I mean, I wouldn't want it to happen anytime soon. I just think it's something we ought to think about. Even if the chamber doesn't do it, it's something we need to think about. I think it'd work out good the way we done it last year. But we need to advertise it and plenty of time in advance to let everybody know that you have. Bring it to us.
You bring it to them, that's something they're gonna work on, so.
They're gonna get a guy on a little bit and can't bring.
Well, we got, basically, we got two more, two more months worth of meetings. And we can think about it and decide whether or not we wanna do it or not. And then we can take the whole rest of the month of September to advertise.
You need a month in advance.
It's something you'll have to actually appropriate money into recycling, I figure. 'Cause there's really nothing in streets or.
Rock and red signal one for that.
Right.
There's not really anything to justify the street department picking up trash.
Well, I wasn't saying, taking it out of your deal. I just know that you're, you're the one that has to deal with it, so.
We'll just have to transfer some monies over into recycling, which, I mean, if we do it the way, kinda the way we done it last year, which would be great, but.
Does it benefit him a lot cleanup wise, I mean?
It helps people. I mean, to a point.
It's got to help people. I mean, to a point, 'cause everybody's got larch machines or something that goes out. But as far as going up here and picking up old tires and old tin around people's houses, that stuff should already be gone. I mean, we've done it for fourteen years. So there shouldn't be any excuse for anybody to have a bunch of tin piled out by accident or this or that or all that.
I was wondering, you know.
But as far as.
Every year they bring in, do they bring it in from everywhere, you know, because all the city's doing it, so let's, let's bring it in the city and dump it.
That's what I, that's what I see wrong with having a drop off.
And the drop off scares me all the time.
They'll have to have some sort of.
Proof of where they live, I don't know. That's the way we did it last year.
We were actually checking people and asking them, well, where you.
Your address. What, what address is this coming from?
I live on Colesville, 'cause my mom lives there.
They'll say on their driver's license where they live. But, I mean, and it, it just really depends on if you wanna get that in depth. I mean, if you wanna spend a week or two with the guys.
Hauling it, I mean.
It, like I said, at the end of September, first of October, we're, we're kinda getting into that slack period where we have a little bit of time to do it. But I'll tell you, it's a mess trying to pick up clean sized mattress that's been sitting outside in the rain for two days and, you know. Take a chance getting bed bugs and, I mean.
No, I'd let everything else, so.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying to decide anything or not. I just was asking questions, 'cause it's something we need to think about between now and the next couple of months. It's a pretty bad ordeal, I mean. We don't wanna pick it up. We want them to bring it out to the recycling center. It would be the best thing. I mean, if you're getting something for free.
So they're just bringing it to the recycling center and dumping it, the transfers?
Not, they brought down to the. Down by, down there.
Paying it to us and we're taking it to the old.
Of course. We split it out.
Then split it out.
We split it up and then we haul it. That's what I'm trying to.
Miller hauls it for us. I'll get.
Somebody hauls it.
Jim brings in a couple of big dumpsters.
Between now and.
Sets them up.
October, September, you wanna plan, we're gonna move.
We need to, we need to do some typing about it in the next couple of months.
And I'll sit down with Miller and talk to him. And, because he told me if we decided to do that, to let him, this time, instead of him coming out. I mean, we called him, he actually done great, 'cause we called him, what, on a Friday?
Right.
And he was off work and he brought us dumpsters and had them sitting there.
Yeah.
He's like, go do it to me again, Charles.
It's nice to have, instead of having, like we did, stack it now, restack it now, go get all the metal out. You know, it's nice to have somebody there.
If you got two guys there that can unload, I mean, or they can split it out, it makes it easier for him, it makes it easier for people. Hey Randy, what would the odds of getting possibly the transfer station maybe open on that Saturday to where they can bring it directly to the transfer station and say, who's that?
Open first Saturday or whatever. Well, there's a court member, they'll okay it.
I like that, instead of our guys having to mess with it. They can't split it up or. Well, if they can't take it to the transfer station, we can't either. So, I mean, it just like us.
Yeah, when they back in, they have to throw the metal over into the metal bin and then the trash in, but that's something that they gotta get.
I don't mind having.
And make sure we.
And then how do you pull exit of who's bringing it? Everybody on Saturday, no matter where they're at?
They have to go across the scales. They have to go across the scales.
It worked. It worked last time.
Yeah.
I mean, it works and you gotta work. If we're gonna do it, let's just allocate them up.
Put a weight on it for each person. I mean, if you go through the scales in the transfer station, they've got a bunch of stuff they can't take. They load that back up and then take it back to the house. Instead of waiting until Charles is gone at the.
Well, we don't have that much trouble doing it. We won't take it, though. You know, do we use enough, a lot of paint and wheels and?
No, I mean, most generally, everybody kinda goes, I mean, it took a while to get them done to sand. You can't have wet paint. We can't have any kind of burnt barrel, no kind of burnt trash whatsoever. And like, even if you burn a box frame, it still got some burnt wood on it. I see they can't take it.
Let's figure it out if we wanna do it or not.
Yeah. That's a deciding night. So, yeah, and I'll get with Miller's and see about what the dumpsters gonna cost and then we'll kind of rule out options.
Okay. Anything else for streets?
Should we stand up and do the plug, do we? It's one ten miles.
Thank you, Charles. That brings down Police Department Chief Jake Murdock.
It's a typical summer month. Been busy, been taking a bunch of calls. I think we had eight, a hundred eighty-seven calls for service last month. So it's picking up, not as many accidents, not as many reports. Our investigator's been pretty busy. He's got, seems like every day he's picking up a new case. Oh, and actually, it's been basic police work. The only thing new is we closed out that last grant that we did. We finally got the approval to close it out today. That was a three thousand dollar equipment grant that you guys approved earlier in the year, so that was really good. Got all the equipment in on that, got it issued out. Now, the state police is putting out another grant. It's the same one they did last year for a hundred thousand that we just didn't apply for, for various reasons. This year's gonna be fifty thousand dollars. It's a no local match, so it's a hundred percent grant funded. And it's okay with you guys. I'm gonna go ahead and apply for that and try to get A-Win radios. We bounced back and forth on refreshing our tasers or buying these radios. But if we get the grant, I'd like to have the radios above the tasers for simple tag. We've got that totality or whatever these clips thing next year. And if for some reason, we have to bring in outside agencies, this'll give us communication interoperability with those departments. So with that, we're gonna try to buy eight radios for the cars, three handhelds, two be for the police department, and we're gonna get one out to the fire department.
We don't have, I mean, we've never had A-Wins or we've had some A-Wins or.
So we had the old ones. And they just, they're just old.
I do, I do, the county had a bunch and whatnot. I don't know where, you know, what, so.
So I think, when A-Win first came out back in two thousand six, two thousand seven, I think Tony got seven. So I think, when A-Win first came out back in two thousand six, two thousand seven, I think Tony got seven or eight. And it just through the lifecycle level, it just kept working. And then there were the original P twenty-five band ones. Well, they're not running band one anymore, so even if they were still working, we'd have to upgrade these to double two band. So, I mean, eventually I was going to have to buy some anyways, but I'm trying to get them on the grant, so let's see if they have to pay for them, because they're, they're kind of pricey.
I'm guessing that grant is probably prioritized for certain things.
Yes, uh, so we're actually ahead of the curve on those. Uh, the number one priority was for, uh, dash body cameras, which we've already got. Uh, tasers, which we've already got, um, accreditation software, which we're working on getting anyways. So, like, new radio systems is about eighth or ninth. So, I don't know if we'll get it, just because they, they may prioritize other departments that don't have body cameras. So, unfortunately, me being ahead of the curve, lost me out money on buying body cameras on a grant, so we're going to shoot for these radios if you guys are okay with it.
You do wonderful.
See if they'll run in ahead.
What do we need to do to give permission to do?
Yeah, I think just, okay, I don't know, nothing.
Good to me.
Once you, I mean, you apply for it, then if it's approved, then we'll go from there.
Yeah, so the deadline, the deadline to apply is August thirty-first. I've already got most of it done. I'm just waiting on my quotes to come in. So right now Arkansas Valley's running about forty-eight thousand dollars for the eight mobiles and three handhelds. Uh, I'm still waiting here for the Kenwood dealer to go run, see if I can get a little better price, maybe try to get more handhelds. And then we should know something in December, when the grant starts getting, if we get approved, then they'll start rolling the money out in January.
I know that A-Win band is a totally separate than our normal band, so you can't have it added to your radios.
So, so actually they make a radio that'll run both bands?
Tri-band or dual-band or something?
Yeah, um, and we looked into those, but it's one of those, I can either specialize in one thing if you're really good at it, or I can multitask and just be okay. And the price basically doubles per radio. So per one mobile unit, instead of four thousand dollars a radio, it jumps up to about twelve thousand per radio. And it doesn't get as good a service.
I'm thinking of space.
Do what?
Thinking of space in the re- in the compartment, you know, the, but.
Well, the ones we had looked at, the, the ones that'll do them both, it's actually two radio decks that you put under your, under the seat, and it's just a, the faceplate, yeah.
I don't know if it's a police question or a park's question, but do we have someone where people living at the park in the vehicle?
He leaves. He leaves at.
Like, right often?
He leaves. That night he leaves. He leaves at his time, so, I mean, there's really nothing we can do. He can be there during the day all he wants to, but at nine thirty, ten o'clock, he leaves. He leaves.
Parked at the park to explore?
Well, there's a van, a van, and then the Dodge pickup, so ones that aren't.
So the van's the new one, because he caught a charge and he's not allowed to be at his house. And he leaves at ten o'clock because he works overnights at another place. And the other guy, he bounces around. My guys run them out at ten. Um, I don't think they can get in there until, what, four in the morning, Charles?
Yeah.
I think it's ten to four, so we're pretty good about running them out. But they go other places, like they'll go stay at Walmart.
Yeah.
Um, and the one guy's been staying at the library. The library's good with you getting there, because he just sits there and gets on their wifi all night.
I just had some people ask me, and I said, well, I don't know.
So, living at the park?
What's the deal? You know, maybe they're, they might, they're probably not there all night, like you said, but.
Yeah.
He leaves out, and, I mean, and they're not bothered. I mean, this has not been, this is nothing new. I mean, this guy's been here for a year.
And he hasn't bothered a thing. He actually cleans up that for other people sometimes, too.
Yeah, the Dodge pickup guy, I saw him several times.
So I should, I don't know if I'd ever get in that position. But as long as he does what he's supposed to, I'm not going to bother him.
Right.
That's the problem.
Okay, uh, anything else for police? Thank you. Brings us water and sewer department, Will Hinchey.
All right, so. Our chemical costs has went up quite a bit from last week. Last, or last month, last month we were at thirteen cents per thousand. We're at nineteen, uh, cents per thousand. And I know you guys have heard me talk about the manganese problem before, and the guys at the plant are telling me it's probably about as bad as they've seen in a long time. We're really fighting it, which is making us, uh, chlorinate more, and we're having to do a lot more chlorinat- uh, chlorination, too. So we're, we're up on our, on our cost per thousand. Water loss for Clinton is thirty-two percent, Burnt Ridge is seventeen percent, and Denard is nineteen percent. We're staying steady about what we have been the last couple of months on that. Previous year we had to lower, so we're going to try to work on that and get that down even more. Uh, project wise, like Mary said, we are working in the alleyway there behind the, uh, suite and the unique and the chamber. It's not as fast go as we thought, like we started this morning and thought we'd start at the manhole and work our way and just put our fall down, and we were right in between. We had, uh, four different phone lines, two gas lines, one of our water service lines, and, I mean, they were so close together, we couldn't even get a bucket in there, so we. The guys dug a lot of that behind us today, so it's slow go, and it was hot. Everybody that comes by goes, could you have this in December? Well, it sounds like a great idea now, but we're already starting, so we're going to continue. And, uh, a lot of people are asking me why we've done it. We have bought a camera system. And now, so if a customer comes and, and has sewer issues, we can clean it out and see if it's our sewer issue or theirs, and. We ran this sewer machine down this, and this was definitely our issue, so we, we may be spending a little bit more time out there doing certain areas. I'm, I'm going to say the more we cameras, the more we're going to find, so the camera system was a good purchase, but it's also going to cause us a lot more work, so. You know, but it's a good service we can offer to our customers, too.
It's a replacement or a sleeve?
We're doing a replacement, so, yeah, this is an old concrete line. They're three foot section concrete lines, and it's, yeah. Going back to the customer connecting back on is the challenge, because with a concrete line, they knocked the hole, put a little bit of pipe, and put a bunch of concrete around it. Well, now I've never made, I've got a, I can't make the fittings, but we got to buy the right fittings to, to go back, so it's slow go. It's not fun.
Is it going to be pretty orderly, though, when you come down through there? You've got one, two, three, five shops, whatever?
Believe it or not, in that one alleyway, we've got over ten sewer connections.
How can that possibly be?
Yeah, so.
But I believe it.
And we're adding it, so there's one sewer connection that we're actually going to.
Well, both sides, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, both sides of the alleyway, so there's ten sewer connections that we counted when we camered that. So, and a lot of infiltration, so we're going to cover those connections. So it is going to work out.
In the long run, it's going to help us.
It's going to help us in the long run, and, you know, it makes sense to do this one. We already have a, a new manhole. They put this manhole there just a few years ago, because it's. Another problem. Well, now we've got a new manhole, the whole line coming in.
I mean, this gas company showing up at the right time and then, and Charles.
We're getting ahead of the gas company. We are going to, as we dig this down through there, the phone company's going to come behind us and put a conduit in, and then they're going to, when they take the. Take the phone off the power lines, then they'll, they'll have a sleeve, they'll have a conduit.
Do we need to put a secondary conduit?
I think when they do it, I think that's, I think they'll put one to one. They just told us as we dug, we could go ahead and batter stuff, and they're going to come in there and run the conduit. Yeah, I think they'll do one to one. Uh, as far as the gas line, we offered to put a sleeve in for the gas company to run through, and they said it was against their policies.
Why are they?
They had to take, they said they had to take, uh, ten foot away from the sewer and water, and I told them, I said, you know, the alleyway's ten foot, so good luck figuring that out.
Is it going to be hard stone and then the gas and outside the road?
Do I know?
Is it going to be that, uh, Artelco, City Plant, blah, blah, blah sewer?
Well, right.
And on the other side, the gas?
Right now, the gas is going, the sewer, the water and sewer line kind of, they're probably about four foot apart, and they kind of run to the left hand side. Start out the right hand side of the alley, and it's got a jog, and now we're to the left hand side.
That's really my question, is it something that we need just to change and say, our water, our sewer line's going to go from right there straight instead of kind of?
Yeah, our sewer line's going to run right down the center. We're actually down the center now, so we're going right by the same place, yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
And then you'll just hook on the best you can to everybody else.
Yeah, we'll, we'll better the connection.
And there's got to be some sort of schematic. I don't know if you stick a riser or something up.
So we're measuring, so we're writing down and measuring each surface we tie back on. We're measuring off the building, we're measuring from the manhole. So we've got measurements on where the tides are. And now we can also camera it. This camera system actually has a locator that goes through it, so as you push it through there and visually see the obstruction or the tap. You can go through the locator and tell you how deep it is and where it is, so we, that's how we mark it all up, beginning.
Great.
Uh, besides that, last month I told you guys, uh, the water board had asked me to go ahead and put out and see what it was going to cost to do some, uh, painting of the tanks. And we had put that out, uh, trying to do it two different ways. Get them all as, while they're here, or do them individually, and then we can pick which one's the most important, but we'll have prices both ways for that. Uh, we are opening up bids for a project at the, uh, water treatment plant. It's something that was already approved for the health department. It was a project that they wanted us to do, and they've approved, and it's to fix it where we can take the, the clear wells and isolate them and run off either one or the other. We do have a little bit of issue with one of the clear wells. When doing this project, we'll be able to take it down, maintenance it, fix some patching, and then run off the other one and not stop operation. Right now, they both run together. It's either all or nothing, so.
How did the replacement of that pump go?
The pump, uh, we did get.
Intake.
Oh, the intake, so right now we've got it pulled.
Okay.
And it's off being worked on, and then we'll put it back in. So it actually went pretty smoothly. The guys were trying to correspond with me through text messages, and I don't have that phone anymore, so they handled it well by themselves. And wondered why I wasn't down there, so, but they did a good job. As far as other projects go, um, we really don't have a whole lot.
Probably going on the painting of the, tap, painting of the water tank?
Yeah, we put, we're putting out some pricing, so we're getting some bids on that and see what it's going to cost to do it per station, or if it's going to be a little bit cheaper from the haves. Have them all done while they're here.
You going to paint up all of them, all we got?
Yes, eventually. They all are due for painting.
Are they?
So, yeah, we don't have one in the system that's really not due for painting. Uh, and also talking about tanks, um, I have, um, sent in a, a request to, uh, the health department for us to close down two tanks. And one of those tanks would be parish tank. Right now it's not, we're not operating that tank. And when we did operate that tank, it was basically put in for the chicken plant. Now all that feeds off that parish tank is the school's firefighting capability, and that's it. But right now they're feeding off the million gallon tank, so we've not taken that away from them, but with that, we were actually having to flush that tank weekly. So we were having to waste a lot of water on the ground because we were losing chlorine, so I had to shut that off, and the one at Burnt Ridge. So, and the one at Burnt Ridge, that was one of the things that's on the ten year plan. There was over six hundred thousand dollars just for that one tank to be replaced. So if I can get them to take that tank out of commission and let's not use it and not have to replace it, that's going to save some money. We've not operated that tank for over a year. So we are running straight off pumps and not, we don't have any water in that tank right now, so that would be a money saver.
Anything else from Will Hinchey? Thank you. Uh, brings down the zoning department, Ken Ball.
I've got a couple of things. One, uh, William and Rebecca Clark, uh, they own some property. At twenty-nine sixty-four Highway sixty-five North. If you're going up the hill, they're the last piece of property on the right hand side in the city limits. They've got about six point seven acres up there. Said we could have possibly five RV parks. Well, that is the site for the possible fifth. The other four are pretty for certain. That one's iffy. What they're wanting to do is have an event before the eclipse on that Saturday and Sunday, which is April the sixth and seventh. And then the eclipse is on the eighth. They're wanting to have, uh, I don't know, they want to have some food vendors up there. And some music and entertainment those two days before the eclipse. And so they are requesting a special event permit from the council to do that. Next, there won't be any alcohol served or permitted on the premises. Family event, just food and entertainment.
I don't know why we, we got to get a special event permit. What, it's different from just having a reunion or?
I mean, are they, yeah, like, like charging money or something?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. The zoning commission can't grant an event permit, but because of the noise ordinance and they're going to be playing music. Well, that has to come in the form of a waiver from the city council.
Also, they want us to waive the noise permit?
Yeah, they're going to play music those, those two days, and then they'll shut it down at ten o'clock each day.
How many neighbors do they have there?
Carlos, say, is your window leave right for?
No, he's not here.
Twelve?
One thing as far as the health department being concerned on that, like if the city's going to give them permission to it, they'd have to make sure that they abide by the health department. The health department has come up with the vendor rules just for this event also. So if they've got more than one food vendor, they got to provide public bathrooms, hand washing stations, and everything else, too, so. Just know that if the city's going to give them, it don't need to override anything that the health department's going to require.
I think the specific thing that needs council approval is going to be a waiver of, basically it's going to be a waiver of the noise ordinance violation for some set period of time.
Yeah, that would be something, though.
It's going to be kind of similar when, when you guys approve, uh, closing the square for a set period of time.
One time event, they don't have to have a bathroom, if it's, it's an event, once a year, you can have ten food trucks out there and no bathroom, as long as it's.
We have four bodies here.
But you have to have, yeah, you have to have certain, I forget.
And another, another question I have, if they're going to be selling stuff, even food, they have to have a sales tax permit and collect sales tax.
How do you vendors do that?
Is time sensitive? I mean, obviously the.
No, you guys, it's April, so.
Twenty twenty-four. It seems like if we're going to do that, you do one blanket thing and say, fourth of July, you know.
Could make me loud for, well, start.
And it'd definitely be a special occasion. It wouldn't be like we're going to waiver this. Now we've done it this one, now we got to do it for somebody else.
It would not be for that weekend.
It might be a good idea to consider a resolution on what you're going to do with, I mean, really, actually, I think that'd be a kind of go away handle for the resolution. What, what activity you're going to allow over that event.
During this part, certain period, because.
This could be an ongoing deal if we grant them a noise.
Well, yeah, this, this will be the first one.
Probably be a good committee style thing, think about what you think's a good idea to allow.
This is going to be one.
Yeah. Good analogy.
Jeff asked last month about, is the city doing anything on the eclipse? I'm like, yeah, I won't be about that, but, I mean, that'd be a good time to do that. I was just thinking about you and me and you, just picking, and just having a, and, and start meeting this, this coming week, pick a day out, because we're going to run into that.
There're going to be more people wanting to do that.
And that'd be easy to have a copy of the resolution. He can, he can hand it to anyone today.
Yeah, he's, he's going to get fifty of those. I don't think they're posted, but it's noisy, it's pretty, pretty sensitive right now.
So instead of doing individuals, we would have one?
Yep, I think, I think that, I think it's probably.
For that time period, you're going to have a bunch.
And I just. And I'd say, there's a twin eclipse. If you want on it, that's fine. I know Jeff, we're good, and I'll be on it. I just throw Dewey around like.
Okay, so, we're going to take care of that in the future.
Yeah.
The only other thing I've got is something that, uh, I brought to the city council, uh, once before last year. And the zoning commission has voted to bring the suggestion to y'all again, and I hope I can explain this as best I can. They are again wanting to restrict mobile homes to just the R-three zones. The reason is because in commercial zones, what's allowed in R-one and R-two is allowed in commercial. So, that would mean mobile homes. So that would mean mobile homes are allowed in commercial zones. Right now, because they're allowed in R-two. One of the concerns uh that Steve Nunley brought up was if, I mean, we're gonna end up with four RV parks, possibly five, but at least four. It would stand to reason that maybe one of those didn't make it as an RV park. And it could be as easy as, well, we didn't make it as an RV park, we're gonna make this a mobile home park. And it's commercial, and we allow that in R-two and commercial. They could do that if they wanted to, and- and I don't, certainly the zoning commission doesn't want those mobile home parks.
They could be considered a tiny home even, or what could, would that be an RV? Like a tiny home, one little twelve, uh, storage building houses.
Yeah, yeah.
Be the same, how is that already, how's that considered now?
That is not considered a recreational vehicle.
Yeah.
But it's, it's not considered a mobile home either.
No. No, it's more, it would be more along the lines of.
This would do nothing for those.
If we're talking about it, we need to kind of consider that.
And. It's like they're just picking on mobile homes.
Yeah.
And the other thing I wanna make clear is, any mobile home where it is right now would be grandfathered in. No matter where it is, if it's.
Until it burns down or tornadoes it away.
They can replace it with a mobile home.
But it has to be.
What they said the other day, zoning meaning?
But it has to be a certain year.
Yeah, it's a certain year.
It's gotta be at least less than ten years old, it's gotta be a certain size.
Right.
But we would write it up to where it could be, if it, tornado, fire, or you just wanna replace it with a newer one, we would allow that to put that, to put another one there.
Looks to me like you'd be better off just to say, no mobile home parks, and the city has no mobile homes. That way, that would get rid of that, that problem.
Well, it should be no mobile homes in a commercial, right?
Well, the problem with that is, you can put a nice mobile home on a commercial lot, make a nice office out of it, you know? I- I don't think anybody's gonna move out on Highway sixty-five and- and spend a hundred thousand dollars for a lot and put a no-mobile home to live in. I mean, I don't see that happening.
The biggest, the biggest issue is, to me, in my opinion, there is no mobile home parks anymore, there are RV parks, or travel trailer parks, or whatever, because you can buy a ten thousand dollar travel trailer, you can't hardly buy a mobile home that you're gonna move, and pay to move it. So the RV park is already there, it ain't much different than a mobile home park personally, that's my opinion. If- if they're gonna move one, I'm saying.
But my question does not end, how much R-three do we have in the city?
Not a lot.
Yeah.
Right.
But you say it's ten percent?
But it's mainly the commercial, isn't it?
Would you say it's ten percent of the city, or five percent, or?
I would say ten.
Ten percent.
Mainly the commercial, isn't it, is it not? The- that- that they're wanting, they're talking about, not necessarily the R-three, or?
Well, the problem, the problem is, in- in commercial, you can put, anything you can do in R-one and R-two, you can do in commercial, right now.
I understand that.
So that's why, that's the only reason they're wanting to do in R-three. We don't have a whole lot of R-three in the city limits. In, right?
Town branch, a little bit.
So.
Or, uh, the other option, but this isn't what they wanted to do. I said, we could just say we only allow R-one in commercial.
And not R-two.
And not R-two. You don't have to change the mobile home ordinance.
Now, what's the difference in R-one and R-two again?
It- it really, it has to do with lot size. They're different minimums on lot size in those two different zones, and some of the conditional uses are different. But mostly, it's- it's just lot size. And of course, both of them are protected from any kind of business or industrial use. I think R-one, a minimum lot size is nine thousand, I think R-two, it's fifteen thousand square feet. So there's really not a whole lot of difference in R-one and R-two, except for the mobile homes.
Right.
What about a job trailer, or a, you know, a- a commercial?
That's a, there's accessory use, something under the commercial. I read this a lot today, I read the zoning stuff a lot, trying to figure this crypto stuff. But yeah, there's an accessory use provision under commercial, so basically, you can put a mobile home if it's connected with your commercial enterprise.
You're not living in it too.
Yeah, it's not your dwelling, but it's your use as your office, or whatever, yeah, accessory use.
I mean, I think that are, that's their part. Little car lot we had, they were, they're trying on putting a portable building, or put a portable building in there, just for the time being, or something, so, you know. Where you differentiate mobile home, portable building.
Well, that's not a mobile home. They've already got a little building there.
Yeah.
But that's not a mobile home either.
I'm saying.
No, but it's a building that gets moved in.
It's portable, portable.
Challenge, the challenges that the mobile homes bring, you know, thirty years after they've been used to their point is, how do you, I think you'll run into that, we ran in. How do you move that old, very, very large piece of salvage metal, that's no longer a functional living unit? Versus where the, the tiny house stuff, I'm not, it's quality of living unit, I don't think there's a lot of difference. But it's easier, I think it's easier to move around, certainly in RVs, much easier.
More mobile, yeah.
And that's where the cities kind of tend to get stuck with something that's, that's the problem from a city level.
But I think it would be much simpler.
Just make R-one in commercial.
Just R-one that's allowed in commercial, not R-two.
And that would pretty much take care of the problem.
But what is, what is, again, the problem?
Somebody doing a mobile home park.
Yeah, if an RV park doesn't make it.
To me, the best way to deal with that problem is say, no mobile home parks in these zones.
That's too simple.
I know it is. Nobody wants to do the separate thing, they wanna drag all this out for two or three months. And- and another thing, they- they sent this here last year, and nobody from the zoning commission showed up to sell it. And I was there at the meeting the other night when you asked them if anybody wanted to come and present this, and nobody did. So there's nobody from the zoning here to- to argue for this, again, but they just want us to rubber stamp it.
But I did ask.
Right.
Yes. Hey, uh, what was the reason we just don't want, the other solution, that, what's the downside of that solution? Why don't we just change the, your solution, you said that they didn't wanna do? Why didn't they not wanna move?
Make just R-one in commercial, not R-two. What's the downside to that?
Why does zoning not wanna do that?
You know, they didn't, I suggested it, and they didn't say why they didn't wanna do it, they just said, no, we just, we'd rather. And I think the reason is because that, Sherry said that was the original plan in the beginning, when they zoned everything. They just wanted to do it in R-three. And somebody came, Mr. Morris came and said, no, I don't wanna do that, and they changed it, and they allowed it in R-two. Sam probably knows about that.
That's what it was.
And so that, that, that was really the only reason I can remember that they gave. But I agree, just say, no, no mobile home parks.
And none of those little portable building parks.
Yeah.
And all of this is gonna have to come in the form of a, uh, all this is gonna have to come in the form of a resolution.
Yeah, if somebody wants to, if somebody wants to sit down with me and explain what they want to accomplish, I'll be happy.
If you're gonna, just go put a cell.
On a, on another note, the same kinda matter, I feel like we need to do something, and I don't know what. We talked about a little bit of that, and it's, on the fact that these travel trailer, RV parks. If they're, there's, most of the time, they're there for a month. They're not there for one night, two nights, you know, most of them are there for a month. They're not paying any kind of taxes, uh, uh, you know, property tax or nothing like that, that's one of the benefits of doing it. We, to me, I feel like, you know, we- we need some way to.
Well, they, I mean, they're having to pay property tax on their RV.
On the, yeah.
They have to do, to have to do that.
I don't think.
And then the, and the, and the person who owns the RV park, they're paying property tax on the land, they're getting property tax.
No, if it's thirty days or more.
But i- it's even, like, we don't have any kind of charge like we do at the hotels, you know, on a, on a hotel motel tag. There's not, I feel like there should be something that you could do.
What they do, if they do, if they, if it's less than thirty days.
I understand that, but.
They stay more than thirty days, they don't pay A P. tax.
But I'm still looking for some way to have some kind of fee on that. I just, they're mobile, but they're not mobile. I know Texas is working on it pretty hard right now, that- that they're trying to do it, because they're having the same problems with this.
You got a lot of Airbnbs and stuff, and that's something that's getting bigger too.
Yes.
Well, they have.
I did, I did, yeah, I did an inspect on Airbnb this week, so.
I mean, if they're, if they're, they're saying, if they're just staying, if they're, if they've got a, you know, really nice uh RV, and they're just going around and staying places, and they're staying here, then they're paying the A P. tax.
It's, it's.
But if they're living in an RV because they don't have the money to buy anything better, then why kick a man when he's down and add a tax on top of it?
I mean, they're paying property tax on their RV, and whoever owns the property that they're staying on has to pay property tax on the property.
I understand that.
The taxes are all being paid.
We're talking property tax on five thousand dollar unit, not on a fifty thousand dollar unit. Um.
There's some people across the hospital that have been there since that RV park's been open.
Yeah.
And they're more of a permanent structure than, there's no way some of them would move.
Right.
They've pretty much become a house.
I'll, I'll get more information on what taxes Texas is doing because of, they've had this issue, and it just keeps getting worse and worse.
Real, real green on copy in Texas.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, that's, that's.
Dewey's right, let it come to ordinance and Jeff's like, let's don't kick it around for three more months, the next meeting, let's.
Can't do nothing unless we're right there.
Uh, the next, so, um, last year, the uh commission recommended doing that, so I prepared a really nice ordinance based on the recom- the commission's recommendation, and it never even got a vote to approve it, one vote. So I will be, I will happily prepare an ordinance at the behest of the mayor, or any city councilman that wants to sponsor something. That's who I'm gonna prepare ordinances for, so. There's nothing, you know, I just, it- it needs to have a sponsor, it needs to have someone that wants to provide it.
And I'll say this, because I'm kinda with Jeff on this. Tim, you need, you need to tell that commission that if they're gonna present something, you don't, you, you're not the hitman, or whatever, I mean, you work for the city. They're on it, if they've got something, they need to, somebody needs to step up. Or either tell the mayor, I don't need to be on it, and we put somebody on there that will. Because you can't read their mind, and they're not here, and that's really not fair to you. Because if we have questions, we need to hear from the people that are on that commission.
That being said, they also, at the commission meeting, when, when asked if they wanted to present this to us again, they said, well, we presented this a year ago, and it didn't even get voted on.
But they didn't present it, they didn't attempt to present it, just like they did this time. They didn't show up.
But he's easy pickers.
I mean, if it's.
Factor based.
It, to me, if it's that important.
It was proposed.
Then they need, somebody needs to be here.
And it got shoved aside. So in the talking at the city zoning commission meeting of them, whether they wanted to present it or not, it was more of a, well, yeah, go ahead and present it again, see what they do this time. It, they, they fully, in, in my, the, the impression I got, they fully expected us to not pass it at all.
Well, I'll be at the next, I was, I think I was out of pocket, I don't know, I'll see, I'll be at the next one, and we'll, we'll discuss this, and find a point first, and say, if we wanna do.
Well, I think what you got, you got one member on there that's pushing for it, and the rest of them are just going along with it. Um, but, you know, when you get down and get across the table from them, I think some of them are gonna say, I don't think it's that big of a deal.
Well, I'll just be at the.
Once you throw all these points out, like, we've been, here, you know, and they can't say why, you know? If it's just 'cause you don't want a mobile home park, okay, then we don't have mobile home parks, you know? That's, solved, problem solved.
Right, 'cause if there's, I mean, if there's, the only reason to do it any different is if there's another reason to do it, other than not have a mobile home.
And the reason about not having any commercial's not a good reason, because somebody can put a decent-looking mobile home and make an office out of it if they wanted to.
Absolutely.
I'm not gonna tell somebody they can't do something with their property, I mean, I'm just not for that, you know?
You know, I, I mean, we've seen it sometimes, when banks come in, you know, they'll set up a, a mobile home, it's temporary, but they still.
Schools got at least three right now, four that we've had for ten years there.
Will's got one.
Yeah, I got one.
I got one too. Yeah, while we're on the topic and not, the same thing with uh, talked to Chad earlier about someone, well, I'm in the city, but my land's no good, I'd kinda like to be out of the city. So why, what's the real reason? You know, I would like to look at livestock, you know, one, you know, right now, we have no goats, no, um.
Pigs.
Pigs.
Sheep.
Unless they're showing up.
Even in R-three?
Something, the projects or something.
Even in R-three?
How's that work? But some kind of thought is about.
I raised, they know their lives.
Uh, I mean, we probably gonna take one violation.
At my house.
I'd like to look at that, and then bring that, I'll talk you over for it, because, uh, one way, like you said, you know, that's maybe, think of that. You know, what do you, what do you have, let's just do that, and then talk that part, is it the annexation, or the guy wants to have four or five goats?
Yeah, I, I, I think the point of that ordinance was, well, it's, it's all their ordinance at a different time when we were trying to not have farms. You know, large-scale farms.
We were, we were out of the city limits, and yet we were in it, and we had pigs and all, you know, and after a while.
Well, the, the, if that, I mean, that's the ordinance, I'm assuming that's what y'all said, and that's the ordinance one. That hadn't been enforced in a long time. There's goats, and there's goats and pigs all over.
I, I think, I think that's, I think that's a really good one to look at, clean up, great, because, because I don't think there's been a lot of energy to enforce it.
There's been no energy.
Someone's got enough acreage they could have, you know?
Sure, so, like I said, so if you got a horse, you got an acre, you got, you know.
Now, if they're up on school hill, no, you can't have a horse up there, you know?
I did number story, but.
Depends on how much land you have.
Shouldn't have.
Probably, I, I think, I, I think it would be reasonable for you to consider some sort of lot size requirement, keep hattles, and so.
And I'm sure there is probably something on the, as far as the USBA, I mean, what's the recommended, you know, an acre per head of cattle, or, you know, whatever.
Oh, you can't go by what they say.
Well, what kind of acre do you have? I mean, I mean, if somebody made a decision somewhere.
If I can keep my goats from cranking.
West Texas, and it goes here. Okay, we're drifting, what else would you have on?
I've gone over my time.
You got over my time.
Uh, I will mention this, I had, we had, we had talked about cleaning up a property, and the person didn't wanna do it, someone had passed away, and uh, uh, they were like, well, I'll just give it to the city, and we're gonna have to pay to clean it up, it's a little narrow lot, and I don't think it's would be good for us up off Pine Street, for the city, then, then we got, we cleaned it up, then, now we got, it's different than having a good piece of, it's bad. But one of the adjoining landowners showed interest in it, and I, I think, I just, I mentioned that last time, we were gonna clean up for the time before that. If it's all right with you, I mean, nothing's really been done on it, so I'm just gonna kinda steer them toward that, let them work out something with their neighbor that may go and buy that lot. It'd be like if someone's gonna sell something right next to you, and you've kinda like first shot at it. And it's not enough acreage to really mess with that, but I wanted to mention that, you know, that makes sense, I forgot to mention. That's all I have under some, is that so true, everybody, I don't think city wants it. Uh, anything else for Tim? Okay, thank you. Uh, brings us down to unfinished business, there is done, brings us to new business. First resolution is for the fire station, Sammy and uh we met the other day, Sammy, Dale, and myself, there were nine applicants, we advertised for an architect, because it's a pretty big job, and Mitzi a lot of her says you need to put out uh bids and evaluate each one, we got nine people, we selected Joshua Stewart, who had already looked at the, we'd contacted, and uh, he was very qualified, but we looked over all the others. There was some, Russellville was closed, Martha Little Rock, Josh Stewart from Judge Song, we selected him. Uh, this is a resolution authorizing the mayor to. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an architectural agreement with Stu Arch Architecture for the proposed construction of the City of Clinton Fire Station. Whereas the City of Clinton, Arkansas intends to construct, to construct a new fire station. And whereas the City of Clinton has followed the state procurement procedure for selection of an architect to provide plans for specific, specifications, to provide construction inspection of the project. And whereas will be necessary for the mayor to act in connection with the architectural agreement, therefore be it resolved by the city council. The City of Clinton, Arkansas hereby declares that the mayor be authorized to execute an agreement with Joshua Stewart of Stu Arch Architecture Incorporated to provide architectural services to the city for the proposed project. I'll entertain a motion in second to accept that resolution. Then call for discussion.
Let me accept the resolution.
Second, any discussion or questions over it? They will, uh, if, if we pass this, we should think, should think he'll do a fine job. There's several qualified people. Proximity was big in our decision, he's familiar, familiar with the local contractors in the area. Think he'll do a really good job, very capable. Highly recommended as references, so I appreciate that. And if we pass this, we'll send out the letters Monday, let them know, I think Monday. Okay, I'll call for a vote for approval.
Farms?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-three dash oh nine.
Okay, brings us to the resolution amendment twenty twenty-two budget. This is a resolution, I think we do it yearly. And Dana will get, get ahead of the curve before we have to run to the end of the year. Uh, this is just making sure we're balanced out. This resolution is providing an amendment to the budget for the City of Clinton, Arkansas for the twelve month period beginning January first, two thousand twenty-two and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Appropriating money for each and every item of expenditure therein provided for. Whereas the city council of the City of Clinton, Arkansas has made a comprehensive study in review of the proposed amendment to the budget. And whereas it is the opinion of the city council that the schedules and exhibits of financial information prepared and reviewed revealing anticipated revenues and expenditures for the counter year should be as accurate as possible for budgetary purposes. Now therefore be it resolved at the city council of Clinton, Arkansas, section one. The resolution shall be known as the amended budget resolution for the City of Clinton, Arkansas for the twelve month period beginning January first, two thousand twenty-two and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, reflecting estimated revenues and expenditures as here and after set forth on the succeeding pages. All revenue herein are estimated and subject to change and appropriations are calculated upon available revenues. Section two, the respective amounts of funds for each and every item of expenditure classification herein proposed in the amended budget for two thousand twenty-two are hereby approved for the City of Clinton, Arkansas and are hereby authorized and appropriated for the purposes herein set forth for the calendar year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two as attached in exhibit A. Section three, the mayor or his duly authorized representative may approve for payment out of the funds hereby appropriated for that purpose. Disapprove any bills, debts or liabilities asserted, asserted as claims against the city. Whereas it is necessary for the efficient operation of the municipal government that a budget be planned and adopted now, therefore this resolution being necessary for the preservation of public peace, health and safety should take effect and be enforced from and after the passage and approval. I'll entertain a motion in second to approve the resolution.
I'm like, what's from when to approve the resolution?
Second.
Any discussion? Is there anything you're going to add on that?
We need to amend? No, I mean, after he brought the. You said we were going to have to amend something again because he brought that other resolution in?
No, we did that at the very beginning, the agenda.
Oh, the agenda, got you, amend the agenda, sorry.
Did I, did I miss, why are we doing twenty twenty-two budget?
Because we have to amend it for everything that, for the actual, that we actually spent and, and received.
It's like our cleanup board.
Yes, that's exactly what it is, it's a cleanup resolution.
We're just doing it.
Kind of late for last year's budget.
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully it'll be until, it's like October? Or hasn't it been October, November, who we did the last one?
Um, I think last year it was later.
So where it happened first, that's good.
Where, where we go? Don't worry, I wish you could really have it on it. I think so, all our departments are matched, we're all expended on, so we had to move plenty or didn't have enough to move some in. Anything else? I'll ask for a vote.
Farms?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-three dash ten.
Okay, this next one is an ordinance raising inventory minimum value. In a nutshell, I think this is, this should pass, the original one was just in two thousand six or, yeah, two thousand seven, the model was here. Things have gone up, Dana was saying the other day, I guess you have to give it a count, everything for a thousand dollars for our inventory.
Yes, at least a thousand or more.
Yeah, set a tire is a bad example because one tire, but you spend a thousand dollars on anything now, you know? I used to have more, but you'd never pay a thousand dollars for a model. And I just said, what number you thinking, five thousand? She's like, yeah, a lot of cities apparently are going to that, uh, five thousand. I think that's municipal league is fine with that and that's what this ordinance is for. Did I explain that well enough just to raise her? Is it all right to place this on the first, second and third reading? Motion second, uh, that I can just do one reading and make a vote on it?
Oh, yeah.
Instead of doing one, then the second.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to place this on all three readings. And I'll read the ordinance and ask for a vote to do that in the second.
Farms?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Okay, I'll read this ordinance. It's an emergency ordinance adopting certain rules and regulations concerning zoning data centers to declare no or. That's later. This is an ordinance in the City of Clinton, Arkansas, let's run that one in real quick. To increase the minimum value for inventory list requirements. Whereas the City of Clinton municipal code currently requires the listing of all personal, personal property owned or used by department with a value of one thousand dollars or more on the master inventory list. Whereas maintaining an inventory list of lower value items is unnecessary and time consuming. Whereas there is a need to raise the minimum value for inventory list requirements. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of Clinton, or the City of Clinton, Arkansas. Section one, title three, chapter three point two eight of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Clinton, Arkansas is hereby amended as follows. Chapter three point two, inventory and assets. Three point two eight oh one, inventory list. The head of each department of the City of Clinton shall create an itemized list of all personal property owned or used by said department which has a value of five thousand dollars or more. The initial inventory list created by this section shall be delivered to the city clerk by August the first, two thousand twenty-three. Section three point two eight point oh two, identifying labels. The city clerk shall maintain a master inventory list and shall assign a number or tag or other identifying labels to each item. Ordinance number two thousand seven dash oh six, section two. Three point two eight point oh three, reporting purchases. Anytime a department purchases or acquires any item of personal property that has a value of five thousand dollars or more, the department head shall report said acquisition to the city clerk for inclusion on the city's master inventory list and the assignments of a number, tag or other identifying label by the city clerk. Three point two eight point oh four, removal from list. Anytime a department determines that an item of personal property valued at five thousand dollars or more is no longer needed by the department or is no longer in the possession of the department due to sale, trade-in, destruction, theft or for any other reason, said fact shall be reported to the mayor and the city clerk for removal of the property from the master inventory list and for the sale or disposal of said property if necessary. Three point two eight point oh five, review. Each department head shall review the master inventory list each December to determine if the master's inventory list accurately lists all the items of personal property owned or controlled by the department which have a value of five thousand dollars or more. Any discrepancies shall be reported to the city clerk, who shall modify and amend the master inventory list. Section two, savings, appeal, uncalled ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict with this ordinance are appealed to the extent of such conflict. And section three, servability, that, that should any word, sentence, clause, paragraph or provision this ordinance be held to be invalid or unconstitutional. Remaining provisions of this ordinance shall remain in full force and effect. I'll entertain a motion in second to adopt the ordinance. What are you motioning about?
Okay.
Any discussion or questions?
One question is, is, I mean, reporting purchases, I guess, was it a thousand dollars before? I mean, not purchased, I'm sorry, a movie, removal list, not the purchase, the removal part. It was a thousand, I guess, right now. If, if, if there's an old truck or something or whatever, you know?
If they sell it, that's get approval to take it off from y'all, to take it off the inventory list.
If it's more than five thousand, five thousand.
If it's on the inventory list.
Yeah, but anytime or just, like, this would be if it's.
Only thing that's on the inventory list is if it's a thousand dollars or more. So it had to be a thousand dollars or more to be on there. So that's all that's on the inventory list.
The inventory list is going to change if this passes.
Yeah, it's going to be small. I'm just saying, right now it's a thousand dollar truck. Right now it's a thousand dollars, but you're talking about not what it sold for, what the original price was.
Yes.
Right, okay, okay.
Like, if it cost us five thousand, it'll be on there. We paid twenty-five hundred or something, it will not be on there.
Anything else?
Well, I've still got a little concern on that, I mean, just for the fact that, how many things can we sell out just?
Well, if you got a hammer drill, you're not going to, I want to sell it, you know, I'll, I, I'll see what you're making, yeah, it's like, well, you got to pay attention, four thousand?
You can buy one and then a year later, oh man, we don't, that thing's no good anymore. And then it gets dumped.
Well, your department heads are responsible.
Trying to check and balance a little bit. That's the only concern, it's not so much the purchases as it is, there's a paper trail with the purchases. But then that paper trail goes away when you just deem it that it's no good anymore.
Well, there's still a paper trail. I mean, if they, if they sell something that's not five thousand dollars, they still got to take that money and put it back into wherever it came from in the city. So it's not like they just get to get rid of it and pocket the money. There's still a paper trail.
What he's saying, what he's saying is they could buy an expensive piece of equipment, something costs a thousand dollar, use it a year and say it's no good anymore.
Yeah.
And we sold it for fifty bucks and they bought it and sell it.
Right, and, and he's right.
And they got a drill that's worth five hundred dollars, is what he said.
And now that I look at that. You got a good point, I mean, look at them. I understand, I'm not, I'm not saying anything about any of the department heads, I'm just saying in general. No, you're right. It opens that can. But, but, but it also takes a ridiculous amount of, I think, unnecessary stuff. I guess that's what I was trying to ask, I understand on the purchase side, I'm wondering on the disposal side of how much of that really happens every, all the time?
How much happens now at a thousand or below?
That's what I'm asking.
I don't know, I mean.
There's not much at all, we took off maybe two or three cars in the last.
That's what I'm trying to ask.
Last week, two weedy.
I guess I'm trying to say is why do we? I understand raising it for the purchase side. I don't understand, you know, why we need to do it on the disposal side too. That's what I'm trying to say. And it's probably, to me, I would think it's more of what the state auditor says that we got to do.
Well, when you do the inventory list for state auditing purposes, when it's five thousand dollars, if anything is below, you don't put it on there.
They don't care, I mean, no.
Whatever our ordinance states, so everything that we have says a thousand dollars, yes.
So, so as far as for reporting, keeping up with, uh?
Everything that's paid, that we pay a thousand dollars or more?
Or more.
I have to put on the inventory list.
Yep.
And that can be so much.
And then if it's, if they don't have it when they come, I get written up as nobody else.
I see what you're saying, but I.
I do the same thing on, on the school side, so that's why I know about that. And it's, yeah, it's a pain, but, you know, a thousand dollars is things that could get lost and it just gets, we don't know what happened to it when the auditor comes in. You know, look, well, we disposed of it, okay, there's the paper trail that shows it was disposed, the auditor's happy.
Who gets written up, your superintendent or you?
The financial person and.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a pain.
It is a pain, I'm not saying it's not a pain.
But I mean, I think, I think there, with our city and, and, on our purchases and stuff like that, it's, 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 I think we're limited, you know, even with five thousand bucks and all that kind of stuff. Usually if something on the purchase thing winds up kind of iffy, then, uh, somebody pretty much can find that out pretty quick.
And there's so many years, I'm just guessing, I don't, municipality may be totally different. There's so many years that you have to keep things for your de, depreciation.
You don't depreciate them off. Only time is if you sell them or it's, like Jay had a bunch of stuff that was no longer usable, then he asked the council to
So.
take it off and remove it because it was no longer usable. What they did with it, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, that's usually.
Throw it away.
That's usually ten years down the road or whatever.
But it doesn't depreciate as far as on your.
Down the road, the, I think the big problem would be the reason you have to do this in there. If you, if you did five thousand on purchases, but you don't change the removal, then your list is still huge.
They don't check and balance.
It ain't going to ma, it ain't going to match. Your list is going to still be huge and you're still going to be having a lot of time consuming things, doing things you don't need to be doing. If you, if you think, if, if, as a city council, we think our employees are doing what you, I know you, we're doing it hypothetically, but as a city council, if we think that our employees are doing something like that, then we should be checking into that and addressing it.
Sure.
That's not something that we have to, should have to plan ahead for.
I don't think we're big enough.
No.
Don't worry about that, but I, I, you, I got your point, but I think it's saved a lot of work.
We're not big enough, but we're small enough, if somebody tried to pull that mess.
I'll bring the weed eaters back.
Yeah. If you, if you don't trust your heads of departments, then, and what you do, if you do that, is you say you don't trust.
I don't, you know, I always, I always try to think of, I don't want to have that can open to where it's available, available to do that. You know, it's not like anything would ever happen, but I'm saying.
Does the number have to be the same for maintaining the list as buying?
If not.
I mean, if not, you might as well leave it at a thousand dollars because it's all be on there.
It'll be on there anyway.
Yeah, I do understand that part of it, but I don't know.
So you're saying, if you set the limit, the buying limit at five thousand dollars?
How can you set a buying limit at five and say you have to remove it at a thousand?
But you can still have everything on there.
The list, the list is the list. And so the reason you're changing both sides is.
And I, I guess.
You don't want a bunch of extra lists, just one for removal, one for purchase.
My mind, I was thinking more of the, um.
The appreciated value.
The depreciated value of it, but that's a.
It really don't come into effect on.
Who states that depreciated value? Yeah.
Yeah.
If the auditor's not, not stating it, then.
If you buy a truck for five thousand dollars and the motor and transmission goes out tomorrow, you probably better just go ahead and let it go.
You know, yeah.
And not worry about what happened to it.
Don't be talking about.
All right, Mr. Mayor, call for a vote.
Yeah, anything else?
Second.
Yeah, we got a motion in second, uh, I'll ask for a vote.
Farms?
Mr. Pistol? Mr. Pistol?
Yes.
Hastings?
Yes.
Lance?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-three dash oh three.
Okay, this brings us down to the last part of new business, and we'll get public comment right after this. This is the ordinance data center and crypto noise, and I think we had a couple of, Chad told us where we're at, and kinda.
Hey, Richard, we have two more ordinances.
Right.
Remember that other ordinance?
We amended the agenda to do another one, so we got this one, and then that one.
Okay, so what, which one we wanna tackle first here?
The crypto.
The, the noise, the noise related.
The original?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and introduce both of them, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great.
Try to register.
And then we gotta read it, and we'll do three rea, we'll do one reading and three, and then we'll do an emergency call, I'll put it on there.
So, uh, okay, so, I guess, has everybody kinda made themselves aware with this issue in the last week, I'm assuming? So, uh, so, uh, it's kinda hit me in the face, 'cause I went up and covered a corn court meeting up in Cersey County Monday, and I was somewhat aware that data centers were a thing, and that, um, there were some people that were maybe unhappy in Faulkner County area, uh, and I walked into the Cersey County meeting, and there were probably a hundred people there, all extremely concerned, so I learned real quick that this is something we should be thinking about. Um, and so, they'd actually had, there was someone actually in their community that was, that was, uh, talking about citing one of these there, and so they've become pretty attuned to the issue, and, uh, they'd done some of their own research and gone around seeing where these places were. So, there is actually a site about thirty minutes from here in the Bono Community, just north of Worcester, uh, where there's an open air, uh, open air data center running, and, um, I haven't been there, but there's Facebook videos where people have shared, I don't know if anyone's seen that or experienced themselves. Uh, I've talked to people that I know, that I trust, that actually went there in person and said, confirmed that the videos that you see on Facebook are accurate about the noise, okay? And so, uh, the number one complaint that the public is in voice, and there are a lot of concerns, but the number one complaint is the amount of noise, and certainly the thing that the city should be concerned about for the benefit of its residents is the noise issue. Uh, so, the municipal league has prepared a, a sample ordinance that they've circulated. Uh, it's very similar to one that's, in fact, maybe exactly the same as one, uh, that has been circulated to the counties as well, if you consider, uh, and that's the first ordinance that you have. Um, I'll point out the reason why, uh, this is in front of you today, and it was sent late, and it's an emergency ordinance that is gonna have to be read in the past today to be made immediately available, and the reason that you need to be considering doing it tonight, rather than say, let's think about it, there, there's kind of a twofold reason. Uh, number one, if tomorrow, you don't do anything, and tomorrow, uh, someone calls Tim and says, I'd like to go ahead and locate a data center in City of Clinton, uh, you're already too late, okay? Because you haven't done any, you haven't done anything. Uh, two, there's actually a, there's actually a, a bill that was passed by the Arkansas Legislature, it's Act eight fifty-one, and I passed that, a copy of that around to everyone, and, um, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna criticize or comment the work of the legislature right now, except I'll just say that it goes into effect August first, and there is some concern whether the effect of Act eight fifty-one might impact municipalities' ability, and counties' ability to regulate the activity, which is why, um, I think you should consider passing this tonight, if you're gonna do it, for those two reasons. Um, I wanna be really clear with what I say, though, uh, advice from the municipal league and, and my kinda careful reading of Act eight fifty-one and, and what you're trying to do tonight, I don't believe if you pass this later, you would necessarily be a foul of Act eighty-one.
Yeah.
I think you're gonna be a key, I think someone might claim that you are in violation of Act eighty-one, and you might find yourself in court from someone trying to use that Act eighty-one to destroy your, any ability you have to regulate what they're doing. So again, I'm not here to criticize the legislature and what they're doing, but they're trying to, um, they're trying to regulate this new business that's going in here, and trying to do something for the good of all their people, uh, but there is a concern with the way it's written and the deadline of August first. August first is the effective date of the, of the, of the state law. Uh, so that's why you're here today, and that's why I've got an emergency ordinance for you, um, and why I've passed it around for consideration for tonight. Uh, that's the noise ordinance. I'll, I'll point out, uh, it's long, I assume it's gonna be read, um, I'll point out that it specifically addresses decibel levels, and, uh, decibel levels as measured by, by rating, and, uh, what it, what it comes out with is a decibel level of sixty-five during the day, I think it's ten to eight P.M., and fifty-five in the evenings. Um, so, six, my understanding of sixty-five decibels is from the property, from the property line, it would be some loud talking, or conversation, or laughter, maybe approximately the level that I'm speaking right now. Um, I'm not a sound guy, but, and there's maybe that somebody here knows more than that, I'd be happy to be corrected, but, uh, that's what sixty-five would be. Um, I will tell you that I'm aware of other jurisdictions that have lowered that number to sixty, uh, and so I just, I know it, I know other jurisdictions have done it. We had a webinar today with the municipal league, and I asked, uh, specifically whether lowering their recommended sample language, lowering it from sixty-five to sixty, whether they had an opinion, whether they thought that would be problematic from a constitutional issue, or distributary issue, or whatever, and the opinion that I got was that they did not necessarily think it would be a problem, that it would be challenging, that you would lose because you lowered it five decibels below what, uh, what their sample ordinance was, uh, was put forth at. Uh, Valonia is a community that's dealt with this specifically through a meeting, and I think, although I don't know, I can't promise you, but I think, uh, sixty was the number that they were working with. I know for a fact that Cersey County went with sixty, okay? That's, that's just what I know. Um, I don't, you don't have any, uh, decibel-specific regulation of noise on any code that I'm aware of, and I'm not aware of any permitted activity in the City of Clinton that has a constant noise rate, 'cause this is a constant noise, this isn't a, this isn't a firing up a chainsaw for a couple minutes, this is a constant noise. I'm not aware of any activities within the City of Clinton that is permitted activity that has a constant rate of noise at sixty-five decibels, or anything above sixty decibels. Uh, my understanding is that there is at least one provider of, uh, of this data center productivity, uh, that is represented to the municipal league, that they believe they can match sixty decibels, so it's not, that would not be outright banning them to listen to sixty, which I think is important, because we're not banning an activity, we're regulating its negative impact on a community, okay? Uh, so anyways, I'm just laying that out there informational. Uh, I prepared the sample ordinance, and I sent that, which is at sixty-five decibels. Uh, I brought today, just in case, it wanted to be entertained, 'cause I wanna be prepared for that, I brought a, uh, a page that could be amended to lower to sixty decibels, it's totally up to you what you wanna do with that, so, uh, so it could be, if you wanted to amend it to sixty, I, I brought, I brought the applicable page from the ordinance that could be done, if you wanted to do that.
Not the ordinance we already have, you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, so you have, yeah, you have the emergency ordinance, and basically there's one page that would be, that would be changed from sixty-five to sixty.
This is the one I have, I don't have it.
That's, that's number two.
I don't have, I don't have one, that's why I can't.
I sent it to you today.
You got this one.
This was sent with the.
That's the one that's in the email.
The, the one page you have is only if we decide to amend it to sixty.
Yeah, my, my question is, do we need, can we just decide, let's go with sixty, or leave it at sixty-five right now before I read it, or is there a procedure?
Uh, you can read it, and then if someone wants to amend to sixty, uh, or you could have the amendment before it's read in its entirety, either way, I don't think anyone wants me to read this thing twice, 'cause it's like seven pages, so, uh, whatever you do, you can amend it to sixty, and it'll just be amended to sixty as, as read otherwise, or you can have.
I'm making a motion to amend it to sixty and place it on first, second, third reading.
I was thinking it.
Okay, any discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Question. I don't think we can do that, 'cause we ain't even made a motion for this yet.
So I think so, okay, so, to.
I think you gotta make a motion, second, for this, and then amend it, and then.
Technically, you make, I think you're right.
You could, you could move to suspend the rules, to amend the agenda, to, uh, include an, to include an amended version that will include a sixty-decibel limit, and then you could have a motion for a first, second, third reason, uh, as amended on the agenda.
You just present that, and, and you get a yes and.
I'm making a motion, Chad, then.
Yeah. Second. Suspend the rules.
Can somebody add that now? Yeah, suspend the rules.
To amend the.
To amend it to sixty decibels and place it.
First, second, third.
First, second, third reading. Is that right, Chip?
Yes.
Okay. And then, any discussion, other discussion? I'll ask for a vote for that, so then I'll read it.
Horns?
Yes.
This.
Vote in the discussion.
No.
This is a vote to discuss. This is a vote for the amendment.
This is a vote for the amendment.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
All right, so I'm gonna circulate one now, you can replace page six of that ordinance with this page.
Now we can have discussion.
So, did this get sent out after the original one? 'Cause that's why I'm not finding.
Yes.
Yeah, that's why I couldn't find it. I didn't see it.
Now he needs to read.
It should be on there, 'cause I sent it today, 'cause they gave it to me like.
And that's a, that's a second ordinance, and that's another ordinance, it's, it's the same topic, but it's a different ordinance, I can talk about that after you do this one, or I can talk about it now.
Let's go ahead.
Let me just, can I read this?
That's what I'm saying, we gotta read it before we do anything.
Go ahead.
All right. It's an emergency ordinance adopting certain rules and regulations concerning external noise, uh, attenuation.
Attenuation.
Attenuation of data centers, and to prevent noise disturbance in the City of Clinton, to declare an emergency and for other purposes. Whereas the equipment associated with the cooling system and generators are required to operate data centers to generate broadband noise in low-frequency homes that result in noise disturbance. Noise disturbance is the cause of degradation, is the cause of degradation, and may produce negative impacts on the public health, property, and the environment. Whereas noise, say it again.
Attenuation.
Attenuation.
Attenuation, okay. Noise attenuation should be an integral part of the design and construction of data centers in order to prevent noise pollution and noise disturbance. Whereas the city finds the public interest is served by the prevention, prevention of unreasonable noise emanating externally from data centers, and provisions of this ordinance are enacted for the purpose of preserving and protecting the public health, safety, and welfare property of the citizens of Clinton, Arkansas. Therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the City of Clinton, Arkansas, section one, title four of the co-ordinances, that the City of Clinton, Arkansas is hereby amended to add chapter four point three three as follows. These sections, four point three three, uh, point oh one, is purpose and applicability, point, four point three three oh two is definitions, point oh three, noise, noise attenuation requirements, point oh four, procedure for measurement, point oh five, noise limitations, point oh six, violations, point zero seven, penalties. Four point three three oh one. Purpose and applicab, applicability of all data centers constructed within this jurisdiction shall be designed and built to incorporate external noise. Help me.
Attenuation.
Attenuation, measures in order to minimize.
Can we read it, Richard?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get through this page, and I'll, minimize the impact of noise disturbances on the residents of Clinton, Arkansas. The ordinance shall apply to limit the noise disturbance originating within municipal limits of Clinton, Arkansas. Four point three three point oh two, definitions, for the purpose of this ordinance, the following definitions shall apply unless the context clearly indicates or requires a different meaning. Ambient noise, the all-encompassing noise level associated with a given environment, being a composite of sounds from all sources, excluding the alleged offensive noise at the locations and approximate time in which comparison with the alleged offense noise is to be made. Data center, a facility constructed and operated that is engaged in storage, management, processing, and transmission of digital data, including facilities used for cryptocurrency mining, which houses network computer systems along with the supporting equipment, such as batteries, backup power generators, H.B.A.C. and cooling systems. Decibel, the unit for measuring the volume of sound equal to twenty times the base ten of their ratio of the pressure of the sound measured to the reference pressure, which is twenty, micro, micro pas, pascals, twenty micro newtons per square meter. Wow. Mechanical equipment, the network computer systems along with the supporting equipment such ba, such as batteries, backup generators, and cooling systems housed on the data centers property. Noise.
Attenuation.
Attenuation, thank you, Jason. Uh, the reduction of noise levels through the use of sound-absorbing material, architectural design techniques, and/or any other suitable means. Noise disturbance is any sound which endangers or injures the safety of health for humans or animals, or B, annoys or disturbs a reasonable person of normal sensit, sensitivities, or endangers or injures a person or real property. A person, it's an individual, association, partnership, or corporation, including any officer, employee, department, or agency. Property line, the imaginary line along the ground surface and its vertical extension which separates the real property owned by the persons from, from that owned by another person, but not including intra-building and real property divisions. Sound, oscillation and pressure, uh, particle displacement, particle velocity, or other physical parameter in a medium with internal forces that causes compression and refraction of that medium. Description of sound may include any characteristics such as sound, including durations, intensities, and frequency. Sound level, number ten, the wave sound pressure level obtained by the use of sound level meter and frequency weighting networks such as A, B, or C as specified in American National Standards Institute specification for sound level meters, or the latest approved revision thereof. If the frequency weight, weight of an employee is not indicated, the A weighting shall apply an eleven sound level meter, an instrument which includes a microphone, an amplifier, R.O.S. detector, and to greater or time-average output meter and weighting networks used to measure sound pressure levels. Yes.
Want me to read now?
Yes.
All right. Four points three three zero three, noise attenuation requirements before a data center has commenced instruction or operating within this jurisdiction. The property owner and operator proposed to build a data center shall comply with the following. One, notice requirements, the property owner and operator must notify a resident within a half-mile radius of the parcel, including any affiliated homeowners, associations, operating within the half-mile radius, that the property owner and operator intends to build and operate or data center on the property. The notice required in this section must be mailed to all postal addresses and homeowners. Associations' addresses contained within a half-mile radius extending from the property line where the proposed data center will be built. Proof of notification shall be filed at the city clerk's office within thirty days of providing notice. The property owner and operator must notify the mayor that the property owner and the operator intends to build and operate a data center. The notification must include the location for the proposed data center. Two, noise study requirements. A, the property owner of the lands upon which the data centers be located shall conduct a sound study performed by a third-party acoustic engineer to document baseline sound levels in the area of the proposed data center, including noise levels measured at the property line in eight locations, north, south, east, west, northwest, northeast, northwest, southeast, southwest. The report of the study must include sound mitigation recommendations based on the results of the sound study. The property owner must provide a copy of the report of the study to the mayor and file with the city clerk within thirty days of completion of the report. Three, noise attenuation plan requirements. A, the property owner must consult with a third-party architectural or design firm to develop a building plan that includes necessary noise attenuation measures in order to prevent the external sound level emanating from the data center from exceeding the sound level limitations below, which will be considered a noise disturbance. The building plan is not required to adopt any or all of the noise attenuation recommendations so long as the plan includes noise attenuation measures that the architectural or design firm deems adequate to be compliant with this ordinance. Noise attenuation measures may include, but not limited to, soundproofing walls, screens, Noise attenuation measures may include but not limited to soundproofing walls, screens, panels, fences, or enclosures, buffer yards, other noise attenuation measures recommended by the third-party acoustic engineer. B, mechanical equipment must be shown on any proposed plan and must be fully screened on all sides. Mechanical equipment not screened by facade of the building must be screened by visually solid fence, screen wall or panel, or parapet wall in construction with the design materials, details, and treatment compatible with those used on the nearest facade of the building. The property owner must provide a copy of the building plan to the mayor and file with the city clerk within thirty days of completion of the plan prior to construction. C, any additions, changes, or expansions of the data center must comply with the noise attenuation requirements of this ordinance and must be designed and submitted to the mayor and file with the city clerk within thirty days of completion of the report. Four, post-completion noise study requirements. Upon the data center's completion, the data center must operate and conduct a post-construction noise study performed by a third-party acoustic engineer to document noise levels emanating from the data center when mechanical equipment is running at full capacity, including all HVAC units and generators necessary for peak operation. Noise levels are to be measured at the property line in the original eight locations used during the baseline study. The data center operator must provide a copy of the report to the mayor and file with the city clerk within thirty days of the completion of the study. B, the data center shall not begin operations before the completion of the post-construction noise study and submission to the mayor and city clerk as required above. In order for the data center to be in compliance, noise study results must show that its operation is in compliance with this ordinance. If the results show that the data center is not in compliance with this ordinance, the data center will be unable to commence operation until the required noise attenuation measures and noise limitations are met. C, furthermore, the data center operator must conduct noise studies under the baseline and post-construction study specifications in accordance with subsections A and B above. The data center operator must provide the results to the mayor and file with the city clerk within thirty days after the anniversary date of the first sound study report. Four point three-three, point zero-four, procedure for measurement, all tests shall be conducted according to the following procedures. Number one, complaint-driven, when the measurement is the, the result of a complaint, measurements will be taken at the property line of the receiving property. Two, normal monitoring, when the measurement procedure is in the normal course of monitoring sound, the measurements will be taken at the real property line of the source of the sound. Three, outdoor conditions, no outdoor measurements must be taken while winds exceed, including gusts fifteen miles per hour under conditions that will allow the sound level meter to become wet or when the ambient temperature is out of range of tolerance on the sound meter. Number four, calibration, the sound level meter must be verified and calibrated according to the manufacturer's specification immediately prior to taking the measuring. Number five, meter placement, the, the sound level mea- sound level meter must be placed a minimum of four feet above the ground or from any reflective surface, the microphone must be pointed at the sound source. Number six, measurements, measurements must include high, average, and low readings. If the sound level meter does not provide these multiple readings, a minimum of three separate measurements must be taken at a single location at a varying time intervals. The average sound level reading shall be used to determine whether there has been a violation of this ordinance. Number seven, monitoring report, the report for each measurement session must include A, the day, date, and time of the measurements, B, date and time of recent calibration, C, temperature and wind speed, the time of measuring, D, identification of the monitoring equipment, E, location, land use, and description of the source, F, location and land use of the listener, and G, sound level measurements. Eight, extraneous sounds, if there are extraneous sounds, sources that are unrelated to the measurements and increase the monitored sound level, the measurement shall be postponed until these noise subside. Four point three-three, point zero-five, noise limitations. It shall be unlawful for any data center to make or continue to cause or permit to be made or continued noise levels constituting a noise disturbance. For the purposes of this section, the external noise level emanating from data centers shall be deemed disturbing to a person, reasonably calculated, disturbed the peace, and unreasonably offensive and injurious to the public or their property if the sound level is- number one, sixty-five decibels-
Richard, another question.
Number one, sixty decibels or higher during the hours of eight AM to ten PM, or fifty-five decibels or higher during the hours of ten PM to eight AM, as determined by a third-party acoustic engineer, measured at the property line of the receiving property. Two, the standard which may be considered in determining whether a violation of this ordinance exists include, but is not limited to, the following. A, the level or volume of the noise, B, the time of day or night the noise occurs, C, the duration of the noise, D, whether the noise is recurrent, intermittent, or constant, E, whether proper and reasonable noise attenuation methods were followed and maintained. Four point three-three, point zero-six, violations. Number one, any or all of the following persons may be held responsible for noise violation. A, the person operating the equipment or creating the noise, B, the person who employs the person operating the equipment or creating the noise at the time of the violation, C, the person who owns or rents the property where the violation occurs. Two, the following acts and the causing thereof are declared to be in violation of this ordinance. A, the sound level emanating from the data center exceeds sixty decibels or A, higher during the hours of eight AM to ten PM, or fifty-five decibels or higher during the hours of ten PM to eight AM, measured at the property line of the receiving property. B, the noise attenuation measures provided in this design plan to the mayor are not incorporated in the construction of the data center. C, any of the required sound study results are not filed with the mayor and the city clerk within thirty days of completion of the report. D, the building plan is not filed with the mayor and the city clerk within thirty days of completion of the plan prior to construction. E, failure to act in accordance with any provisions of this, provisions of this ordinance. Three, all data centers shall be in compliance with the requirements of this ordinance before commencing operation. Failure to do so will be deemed in violation of this ordinance and results in an injunction and/or a stay in commencing operation. Four point three-three, point zero-seven, penalties. One, any person, firm, corporation, partnership, association, owner, occupant, agent, or anyone having ownership in the subject property or supervision or control of the data center that violates or fails to comply with any provisions of this ordinance shall be guilty of a misdemeanor. Two, upon conviction of such violations, any offending party shall be punished by a fine of a thousand dollars for any one specified offense or violation, or double that sum for repetition of the offense or violation. If the act prohibited is continuous in time, the finer penalty for allowing the continuous thereof in violation of this ordinance shall be five hundred for each day that it may unlawfully continue. If the prohibited act continues after conviction of violation and injunction in court of proper jurisdiction to evade the nuisance and violation of the ordinance may be sought and rewarded. Three, the city or any citizen shall be entitled to pursue all legal and equitable remedies available under the law in order to evade the nuisance and compel compliance with this ordinance, including injunctive relief and any civil damages that court deems appropriate. Four, until the data center is in compliance with this ordinance and required noise attenuation measures are implemented and noise limitations met, the data center shall cease operation. Section two, severability, if any provisions of this ordinance is found to be invalid by the decision of any court of competent jurisdiction, such invalidity shall not affect the remaining sections, phrases, and provisions of this ordinance which remains valid and enforceable. Number three, section three, emergency clause, the city of Clinton finds that this, that the immediate implementa- implementation of this ordinance is necessary for the preservation of the public's peace, health, safety, welfare, and property. An emergency is hereby declared to exist and that this ordinance is to be in effect immediately after its adoption.
Good job. Okay. I'll entertain a motion, second, to adopt.
How move we adopt the ordinance?
Second.
Any other discussion? I'll ask for a vote.
Just, you know, just thinking out loud and looking at, this is from Yale EDU, decibel level comparison charts. Says normal, you know, a, a normal business office is sixty to sixty-five dB decibels. Normal conversation, sixty to seventy decibels. Vacuum cleaner, seventy-five decibels. You know, household refrigerator, fifty-five decibels.
Sounds like sixty-fifth.
I'm just, you know, putting that out there that it's not a, I mean, I don't know, I hadn't watched the video, but it's not a huge noise when you're talking, a refrigerator, fifty-five decibels.
They were, um, so the, the, uh, sound clip that they, they have someone there that's standing at the, uh, the lady in Vonnell's, her house, at the property line, about fifteen feet from the property line, and they had a sound meter device, and they were recording it, and so you, when you're listening to the audio, I think everyone that's heard, I think everyone that's heard it thought it was the worst thing they've ever heard in their entire lives.
It's a real high pitch.
The, the decibel meter was, he had it on, he ran it on an A frequency and a C frequency. And I think it was reading at like sixty-three, so it was not, it was a little bit below sixty-five, but it was above sixty. I don't know if that, yet, again, you know, I, I don't wanna come out here and act like I'm some sort of expert on this stuff, 'cause I'm not. I, I, you know, I wish we had more time to think about these things, but we just don't. I think that's where some of the concern was, though, is that somebody might be able to make that sound that I think most people feel like is a defensive sound, uh, fit within that, that realm, so. And, and I think there are, and I'll also just say, I think there are other jurisdictions that are concerned that they might have existing uses out there, you know, say like maybe out in county somewhere, there might be existing uses that are, that are operating at that, that volume already and other uses that haven't had complaints driven, you know, about them. They don't wanna look like they're picking on data centers specifically when they're allowing other uses. I'm not aware of anybody that's in operation in the city of Clinton that is operating at a constant level of above sixty-five decibels. And again, that's, that's, I have, outside of your property.
Constant level. And at the property line, right?
Yeah, that, yeah, that, that's, that's beyond, so that's, that's emanating sixty-five decibels beyond, beyond your own property.
The closest one would probably be right there by Gifford's house, a big compressor station.
Yeah.
At the end of Cemetery Road.
I mean, I would-
It's out, it's out of the season.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's the closest one that I can think of, the city limits.
There are, so, yeah, there are gas compressors out in the county, I, I think there's a little bit of concern about gas compressors out in the county that, but in the city, there aren't any gas compressors, so.
That's gonna be probably, as far as ongoing noise, that's gonna be the closest one in the city that I can, I hear that in my house.
Where?
I can hear, what?
Behind the lights.
There was a noise ordinance for those several, several years ago. But there is one at Ofs', and it has never reached its decibel point.
Right.
It's been checked several times.
I mean, you know, I was just wanting to know, the telephone dial tone, it says eighty-decibel level. I guess I'm guessing from this list that that's you-
Yeah, you got it right here, it's your ear too, that's not from the property line.
That's just telling, I'm just trying to kinda get an idea of how much sixty decibels is.
The videos that I saw wasn't so much of how loud it was, it's just the frequency that it-
It is a high pitch.
Over and over.
And I think it's a constant nature.
Sure.
It's the fact that it never ends, so if you're, if you constantly live in a life where every board, every sound around you is sixty-five decibels, and someone has to speak at eighty, that, every, somebody has to have a telephone ring to talk to you and communicate with you, so.
Okay, any other discussion, I think we've got a motion, second. I'll ask for a vote.
Horns?
Yes.
Pastings?
No, because of the reason why that I don't wanna.
You don't have to explain it, just vote.
Yeah, no, and I was gonna explain it, and he started that we're gonna do a vote, I was gonna explain that, the, the reason why I don't like it, so, okay. That's cool.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Oh, you weren't there in the discussion?
No, but he stopped too quick, I mean, you know, he said, "Oh, we're in discussion, we're done," so, okay, that's fine.
Do we need to adopt the emergency clause, or is it?
Yes.
Entertaining a motion, second.
Will we adopt the emergency clause?
Second. Did we get a second? Okay, any discussion? Ask for a vote?
Horns?
Yes.
Pastings?
No.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Twenty-twenty-three dash oh-four.
Okay, brings us to, this last ordinance?
Yeah, you're not done.
Yeah, I understand. Okay.
You want me to introduce this one?
Yes, please.
So, this is, uh, this is not a municipal sample ordinance, this is, uh, I prepared this late today after I spent some time looking at our, our zoning ordinance. The concern is, uh, where, I don't think there's anybody that would really argue with me after, after seeing what is going on, what is going on at, at, at these crypto-mining data centers, uh, that it's an industrial activity, but because it's new, I just didn't wanna leave any question that it was an industrial activity, so I, I went to our zoning ordinance and I added a definition of data center and specifically stated that it is, it is an industrial activity or industrial use that would be limited to property zone, general industrial one, um, and that it has accompanying hazards that require conditional use pro- permit, which is something that you've got, there's a process that you've got. Again, it's not, this is not a blanket denial, it's just a, it's just a zoning restriction on, it needs to be in the industrial area, uh, and it needs to follow, uh, conditional use guidelines, probably gonna be related to making sure that we don't have noise emanating into the residential areas that might buffer the industrial area, so, that's why, that's why I prepared this.
Can we read it? Yeah, you can, you're, you're better than me, I'll entertain a motion, second, place this on the first, second, third, a reading, uh, with the emergency clause. Okay, so move.
Second.
Second. I'll ask for a vote, and then we-
Horns?
Yes.
Pastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Pistol will read the order.
An, an emergency ordinance adopting certain rules and regulations concerning zoning of data centers to declare emergency and for other purposes. Whereas data centers are a growing industry use, growing industrial use in the state of Arkansas, and whereas this is a need to define a data center in the city of Clinton zoning code and clarify that data centers are industri- an industrial use. Therefore, being ordained by the city council of the city of Clinton, Arkansas, section one, title fourteen, section fourteen, point zero-one, point zero-two, the code of ordinances of the city of Clinton, Arkansas, is hereby amended to add the definition of data center as follows. Data center, a facility constructed and operated that is engaged in storage, management, processing, and transmission of digital data, including facilities used for cryptocurrency mining, which houses network computer systems along with supporting equipment such as batteries, backup power generators, HVAC, and cooling systems. The data center as it is defined herein is an industrial use and therefore limited to property zone as general industrial dash I. Further, a data center as it is defined herein has by reason of its operation accompanying hazards, including but not limited to fire, explosion, noise, or vibration, and requires a conditional use permit as prescribed in subsection three-six herein. Section two, severability, if any provision of this ordinance is found to be invalid by the decision of any court of competent jurisdiction, such invalidity shall not affect the remaining sections, phrases, and provisions of this ordinance which remain valid and enforceable. Section three, emergency clause, the city of Clinton finds that the immediate implementation of this ordinance is necessary for the preservation of the public's peace, health, safety, welfare, and property. An emergency is hereby declared to exist and that this ordinance is to be in effect immediately after its adoption.
Thank you, I'll entertain a motion, second, to adopt the emergency.
How move we adopt it?
Second.
Any discussion?
TM, is there anything else we need to know, or? That you can think of?
I don't think so.
Yep.
Anything else, something to call for a vote?
Horns?
Yes.
Pastings?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
The emergency clause is already in this?
Yeah, there's emergency clause, but we need a vote.
We need a vote on that.
Oh, yeah, I'll entertain my second to adopt the emergency clause.
So move.
Second, second.
Any discussion, I'll ask for a vote?
Horns?
Yes.
Pastings?
Yeah.
Lynch?
Yes.
Pistol?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Twenty-twenty-three dash oh-five.
Thank you, brings us to public comments. I think, uh, Andrew and Sally Jones, he, finally, yeah, uh, you're here tonight, with the bus station property, the Bobby Young, Jack Hill. I didn't know if you wanted to speak, uh, get-
Um, we're going to have a live-
Andrew may talk.
He had a phone call, I think he dropped out of the way.
Well, we, yeah, we can, yeah, well, that'd be no problem. In, in the public comments, did you, did any of the council, I mean, I didn't even cut you off, I'm sorry about that, sorry.
It's fine.
Andrew, did you wanna speak on, just, I just, I talked to council members that you'd be interested in the, the bus station property, is what I'm calling it. It's pretty laid back, it's, you know.
Okay.
It's a whole system.
Yeah, so, um, my folks have had the restaurant, this is my mom, Sally, and they've had the old bus station for a lot of years, and it's, um, it's, it's gotten to a point where we really feel like we need to make a move with that building. And the longer it sits, the further downhill it goes, and, and, and it's been my experience working there, doing the projects out front, and just, I can't get, hardly get anything done for people coming, and the excitement that comes about when people are under the false impression that we're going to fix it up and get it back in operation. And, you know, we would love to do that, but financially, it just, it's, it's not, it's not feasible for us at this point, and so, um, so we had talked about what some options may be, and we would like to present it to the city for possibly, you know, purchasing it at, you know, negotiating a purchase for it, being that it does have so much history, and there may be something that you guys could, could make out of it, and, and, in terms, you know, something that's going downhill potentially into something that would be good for the community. And so that's what we wanted to kind of present to y'all, and, um.
You know, how much land approximately just kind of comes out and goes?
Well, um.
I can, I can, we can get the calls on that, and I can get it to each council member, and then kind of get together and decide on what we think that, you know.
Yeah, to be honest, Doc, as far as, I hadn't done the homework on that, it's a relatively small lot.
Right.
It goes up just a little bit past the back.
Yeah, just not all the way up the hill, just goes up in a little ways.
Just a little way up that hill.
That shows one point one seven acres.
Okay, yeah, so it's, it's not a lot of property, um, and, and I've tried to, I run a little construction crew, we, we try to go through their weedy and just kind of, basically, we've been doing just the minimum to, to make it towards, you know, not just a.
Would it, would it be possible to, yeah, I've got your contacts about the, I'll just give the council, if they wanted to walk through it at some point?
Yes.
Check it out.
And, and at that point, see, I've been using it for storage.
Well, then, it's not to, yeah, you don't, don't clean it, it just kind of, they'll kind of roll.
Well, I think we would even feel more comfortable, that would definitely be an option, but what, what we'd like to do, I've talked to Hutch's auction, what I'm, I'm trying to coordinate an auction to where I can get rid of some of the stuff that's inside of it, because it's really not presentable at this point.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Um, but, but we would definitely strive towards that if we had some kind of, you know.
We could get together as a group and think what we have to offer, and then see if we're on the same page, and then go from there, and then Hutch comes in and sold that, and we're all through it, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody knows the bus station, guys went to war, you know.
Yeah.
And like I said, when you're out there, they think you've got to open up, you know.
Yeah, yeah, and so, we appreciate y'all's time, and, and we thank you, and, and, so, we're just really looking for a solution to both, you know, what could potentially become a bigger problem. And, and so, it's got a lot of history, and so we appreciate y'all's time, and, and I will work on getting Hutch up there, we're going to get, get, get the place emptied out.
Sure, but I'll tell you, yeah, we'll, we'll, I'll be in contact with this coming week, and then I appreciate y'all's time for putting up with us.
Well, thank you. It's been interesting, we, we had never sat in on one of these, so, well, I hadn't, I guess more than that, but, yeah, all right, well, thank you very much for your time, y'all have a good night.
Thanks, man. Uh, brings us down, any other public comments? Sean, do you want to add anything?
These are quick, I can't.
I have a question.
Okay.
On our, the, the rest of the property line, when are we going to, when are we going to look at getting that into our, we got to take it, do the salary, whatever we did with it last time, to get it in the general fund?
We won't have enough salary to be able to do that first.
Right, and we did, last time we did it from September through the end of the year, right?
I think it was January through September.
January through September, okay, so we're getting, we're getting close to being able to do that again this year, because it, we won't have as much this time as we had last time, right? Last time it was three hundred twelve, this time it's only like two hundred and thirteen thousand in there?
Something like that.
So, I mean, quite as much, but at some point, we need to get it moved to our general fund so that we can be able to use it, right?
We can't until we actually expend the salaries.
Right, but, I mean, we need to be looking at when we can do that somehow, is all I would say.
Tim, it's possible if we can.
Right, I mean, with all the projects we got coming up, we need to be looking towards putting that into our general fund.
And what we're doing, what we've done with the last time, you know.
Should still be there.
The, the extra besides the bonuses, what, what were we planning to do with it? Leaving it in general, are we going to put it to projects, what?
We're going to build a fire station.
Well, a fire station, a fire station's coming up. Fire station's kind of a separate entity, you know.
No, not really.
In a sense.
Because that money is in our general fund, which we, the city's building the fire station. It ain't the fire department.
I understand that part of it, but there is funds for that, that we don't need to just say, okay, that's where everything's going to go to the fire department.
Well, there'll be plenty of yours, well.
I mean, I'm not, I'm just saying, you know, if we're going to deem it and say, okay, yeah, we're doing that to, to, to the fire department, then I'm okay, I don't want to just leave it in the general fund, but I know that there is funds that are, for the next ten, twelve years, that the fire department will have to, to pay that, so.
Pay towards it.
Pay towards it, you know, so, just, I'd rather earmark it, I've always said I want to earmark it for something instead of just putting it in general and saying, okay, we'll use it where we need it.
Well, you think about that, because, you know, getting our mayor's, you know, what we have coming up for the fire department, whoever could go in.
No, no.
Probably didn't put it in a CD for a while with the energy rates where they are.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is, we can't do nothing with it until we get it out of there.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm about new stuff, I'm talking about what we've already taken out, you know, I know we did some bonuses with it, but that was only a portion of it. Where did the other part come?
We bought that land.
It's still there.
We did buy the land with it, but I think we're paying it, you know, I, I don't know if we bought the land just with that, that's what I'm, I just think the public needs to know, okay, hey, you know, what we're doing with it. I don't want, I've had people say, well, it's just getting dumped in general, and then nobody knows what happened to it.
Y'all get a report every month.
Yeah, you, you can put it where you want, but like I said, be thinking about that and all.
Well, they do.
Anything else from the public? Uh, under mayor's comments, a lot of people just have passed, and I'd start naming anybody, but I'm, if you leave people out, of course, Bob Sisko yesterday, David Jim Cossey, Corinne Weatherly is to be remembered tomorrow, is that from two to four at the fairgrounds? Remember that, she did.
Is that the fairgrounds?
Uh, I don't know, yeah, I think, I think so, and she's gone, I think they have her remain, and Ash is buried over there, so, uh, always a big part of this community, all these people were, Bob Sisko, I mean, Jim Cossey, out of Culpeper, Delma Webb, one of the Webb sisters, just one of the three left now, and she'll be, she'll be Saturday at ten, and Jim Minor, a bunch of people, anyway, remember those folks, it's done so much for our community, I know you do. The other thing was the bus station purchase, Andrew and Sally's here, appreciate that, be thinking about that, that's one of the things, we've got a lot of building coming up, all ways, streets and roads and ditches, we have a police station that we haven't really, you know, caught back on, can't really do anything about that until we figure out something with the county, but certainly, Jeb mentioned, the fire department will be a pretty major purchase, and, like I said, the police station. Auditorium Road, I talked with Superintendent Monday, Tuesday, and I might have even a better option for that, still got to make sure we get in the confines of state, have the right engineer, we'll be talking about that next month. Oh, the eclipse, I mentioned, just threw that out there, but I would like for maybe three of us, or whoever wants to sit down and have a workshop on that and kind of ride herd on that, something we need to, you know, the county, Danos, everybody, but the city, we're going to have something specific, we need to kind of plan on that. Anytime this coming week that y'all want to meet or whatever, or I'll, I'll reach out to you about Tuesday and say Thursday, or whatever. Oh, the Clinton reunion, September twenty-second, twenty-third, maybe start off on the twenty-first, Mark Story's going to be back again for that, purchase of the bus station, I wrote that down twice, maybe around August the first, or eighth, kind of have a budget meeting, and kind of see where we're at on everything, and, well, the fire department's going to take this much, let's leave some for, if we're going to, something, you know, whatever, be thinking along those lines, and maybe start a little earlier than I do every year. Well, that, that's about all I have. Warren, good to see you, so, I'm telling what all you call it. Got a new reader in town, Jeb Pistol, did a great job. Uh, if nothing else, y'all have a good weekend, remember Corinne, and, uh, Mara for sure, and all the families that I mentioned. Nothing else, I entertain a motion, second, to the yard.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Yep.[1786.62]